All right, thank you for joining tonight's Meet the Candidate Forum like we have some had a little issue with Facebook, but like it got cleared up just in time. So, thank you. I am President Paul of the Gwinnett N A C P. I want to thank you for joining tonight's Meet the Candidate Forum with the City Council members of the city of Grayson. Um, just wanna uh talk about some friendly reminders, early voting. This is the last week of early voting. It ends on Friday, October thirty first on Halloween. So if you have not voted for your city council elections, whether that's in Grayson, Norcross, Snellville, Lawrenceville, Delu, DeCula, Liburn, please take advantage of doing that um this week. Um, all Saturday voting has ended. Your last day to vote will be on Election Day, which is next week, November the fourth on Tuesday. Polls for the Minnesota will be open from nine AM to five PM. And as I've always stated, those of you who live within the city limits, um, make sure that you not only go to your local city halls to vote, that you pivot from City Hall and head down to your regular early voting precinct if you're going this week to vote Monday through Friday. Those early voting precincts for the county will be open from seven to seven, and you'll be going there to vote for Public Service Commissioner and saying yes to East Plots. We do support East Plots as an organization and definitely want you to support the East Plots because that helps maintain the upkeep of our schools, allows to buy new schools, and that funding goes towards the security systems and everything that a lot of parents have wanted to see put in place after all the school shootings. Uh, I know unfortunately on the flyer, we had two candidates that were supposed to be here tonight, uh Ms. Rochelle Wright, as well as candidate Mike Bruce. Fortunately, Ms. Wright has declined coming. Um, the timing was a little interesting to us because it did happen within a day or two after um we called out the mayor and city council of the city of Grayson for not posting signage outside of uh City Hall to make voters aware that that is a uh voting precinct for them to not only early vote, but come there and vote on Election Day. And so I know the mayor and one of the city council members endorse Ms. Rochelle Wright. Um, so I, we just do find it interesting that, you know, after, you know, organization like the N A C P is standing up for so uh for justice, civil rights, standing up for voting rights, standing up for access at the ballot, um, that a candidate will pull out because uh, we called out city council and the mayor for not uh being transparent to make sure that the precinct had signage. Now, I do know an electronic sign has been uh put up or was already there, but they started putting voter information on it that was not there when when we, we and I went out there initially and posted those pictures. Uh, it was a trunk or treat information on there. So again, uh, it would be great to see the city put physical signs in the ground um near the entrance so that people can know that that's where they need to go to vote. As I always say, please vet your candidates, look at who's supporting these candidates, and if you're not happy uh with those people, then you know, you you got opportunity to make a different decision. So um, moving on, uh, we do have Mike Bruce, who is the other candidate uh running for uh city council in post four here in uh the city of Grayson. So he is with us tonight to talk about his platform and uh why you should vote for him. And so we're gonna bring him into the room shortly. Also, I'm gonna bring in our moderator right now, Ms. Nah Henry, who is the Social Action Chair for the Gwinnett Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. And I also want to give a brief shout out to our sponsors. Want to shout out uh the Levitt family, uh, who is the oldest and only black owned funeral home in Gwinnett County and also ARC Temporary Staffing. If you are looking for a job or in need of a job, please go to ARC, A R K, temp, S T E M P, staffing, S T A F F I N G dot com, and they will hook you up with a job if you're out there uh looking for a job at this time. So this time I'm gonna bring in Mrs. Nah Henry. Hello, Ms. Henry.
Hello, Mr. Paul. Thank you so much for having me this evening. What an honor.
No, the pleasure is all ours. So uh Ms. Namari Henry, I'm gonna let her take over at this time, and I'm gonna fall back to the back room. And we're gonna bring in our special guest, Mr. Mike Bruce, uh, who is running for city council in post four in Grayson. Uh, just want to remind everyone, um, I'll be keeping time. Uh, you'll have two and a, two and a half minutes to open us up. And then you'll have two minutes between questions. And um, I mean, I come, you see me coming around, it pretty much probably means you got about thirty seconds before the buzzer goes off. Just a fair warning, but uh at this time I fade to the back and uh the floor is yours, Ms. Henry.
All righty, thank you, thank you. Um, Mike, thank you so much for being here with us this evening. Uh, yes, thank you. Can you please tell us a little bit about yourself and what inspired you to run the Grayson City Council Post Four?
Sure. Um, so two and a half minutes is a very long time to talk about myself, so I probably won't take all that time. Um, I grew up in in a small town in Connecticut and um grew up to a, you know, a family of five. I had two sisters. I was right in the middle. Um, I, I joined the army right out of high school, left for uh our basic training July, a month after I graduated high school, spent four years in the service. Uh, I got to travel all over the place, like New Jersey and Fort Knox, Kentucky, and San Antonio, Texas, and El Paso. So you know, really exciting places to be. Um, but I spent a majority of my military career in New Jersey. I also um, after the military, I moved to Montgomery, Alabama, lived there for a number of years. Um, worked for the university. I actually went to Troy State University, Montgomery, which is now just Troy State University. Uh, I became a webmaster um, cause I have my degree is in computer science. And uh, got some interesting times. I, I don't know if anybody's familiar with Montgomery or how it's laid out, but our office was right across the street from where Rosa Parks was arrested at the Empire Theater, and I got to meet her twice, you know, one time when we did groundbreaking, one time, and the next time when we opened the doors to the museum. And as the webmaster, I was able to actually photograph every day we, we, you know, early internet days, photographed the construction of the library and museum, which was really kind of interesting on how they did that. And then we would post that every day a, a progress to the, to the museum. Um, in nineteen ninety-nine, I left Montgomery uh to come to Atlanta and work in the IT field, and I've been, you know, I've done that for uh, close to thirty-five years, working in IT in one, one form or another. Um, finishing up, last couple of years ago, I stopped working in IT uh as a Vice President of Software Engineering. My wife and I, we uh married in two thousand and four, is that right? Yeah, two thousand, two thousand and four. Tell me if I didn't get that right. So we've been married for twenty-one years. We have three amazing kids. They are um just, just fantastic. Two of them are in college right now, and my daughter, our daughter is in San Francisco. Um, I have an MBA from University of Georgia, and I have a small business in Grayson selling Legos and selling joy to kids and parents and um whatnot. I, I find that um the retail business is completely different than corporate IT, but it also happens to give me a lot of joy. It's a lot of fun. And I get to meet some amazing people in the community. Now, yeah, and and just why I'm running is I, I see some things that I would like to see changed in our county or in our town, um, mainly our traffic congestion problems. Um, I'd like to still see our town be a small town, um, even, even with demographic changes. I think we could still be a really great town for anybody that lives here. Um, we are extremely diverse. I live in a neighborhood that is not one single race. I think, you know, from a standpoint of diversity in our neighborhood, we have um, probably seven different um groups of people, and they're all fabulous. I've learned something from every single neighbor that I have. And that's just, that's just on my road. Um, but I see Gwinnett is that way, and Grayson in particular is changing demographically, and I think um, I'd like to see, I'd like to see us be a small town that supports um the diverse population that we have. Um, yeah, so that's one of the main reasons I'm running is I, I think I could do a really good job there.
All righty, thank you, Mike. Thank you. Um, now let's talk about road resurfacing infrastructure and projects, okay? So the twenty twenty-five road resurfacing program includes adding sidewalks, curb, and gutter and sidewalk repair. How do you prioritize which streets get upgraded first, and how will you ensure funding remains adequate across neighborhoods, not just main corridors?
Uh, good question. So make sure I understand it is what's first and how do we make sure that everybody's included, right?
Absolutely.
So I think ob- obviously, the roads that have the heaviest amount of traffic need to be in the best condition. Um, that doesn't, that doesn't mean that other roads uh shouldn't be fixed, but if we have a lot of traffic and that traffic, especially on twenty, and we all know that that gets crazy, um, that definitely has to be a, a well-maintained road, especially with the fact that we have a lot of traffic that travels from the uh, the east side of Grayson to the west side of Grayson in the morning and opposite direction in the evening. But I think also working more with the county to make sure that we have funding to take care of the, the side streets and making sure that um, that no neighborhood is neglected is, is, is absolutely critical. And I can give you one example of a road that's right, right, literally right behind me. You can't see it, but the road is Village Road, and Village Road is a unique road in Grayson where the first two halves on either side of the road are inside of basically lit, Grayson City Limits, and then the rest of the road is Gwinnett County. Um, they'll up to the house that is right by my back door. And what's really kind of interesting about that is I met with um, what I hope will be a future constituent about the drainage, and he, he can, he told me about how the uh, the culvers, you know, where the, the water can run underneath the driveway is all backed up for his house, the neighbor's house, and pretty much all the houses down the street, and nobody wants to give him an answer or help him get this resolved. I find that really kind of interesting, you know, where I've, I've always had good luck in our neighborhood when I've called the city and had uh something wrong with a sidewalk or a pothole or something, that city would come out and fix it pretty good, pretty fast. Um, but he hasn't had that luck, and he showed me all the emails on all the times that he has tried to contact the city and get somewhere he has in four years. So my, my approach would be is to make sure that every citizen can be heard and can uh get the, the repairs that they need. I am all for the um, the residents uh of getting that and making sure that everybody is included in getting the repairs that are required in our, in our, in our community.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, now, let's go to pedestrian connectivity and sidewalks. How will you balance the cost burden, construction maintenance, with ensuring walkability and safe access for all residents, including in lower density or older parts of the city?
Right. Well, so that's a, that's a topic that's kind of near and dear to my heart, uh, mainly because uh my wife uses the sidewalks for her electric truck, her electric truck that she likes to ride. I see a lot of people that use the sidewalks for their e-bikes or scooters. Um, I've seen people skateboard on them. I definitely have seen a lot of people walking, and people may have seen me walking. I, I sometimes walk to my job. It, it's a tough thing to balance, right? So the, the city has limited funds. Um, the sidewalks on the main thoroughfare are, are very good condition. Um, I definitely know that when we have new uh business construction on the main corridor, that they can fund those sidewalks, um, making them wide enough for people to ride their, their bikes or their, or their scooters or whichever, and make sure that's safe for pedestrians. Older neighborhoods are a tough one because they, you know, it just depends on how wide the roads are, um, how much usage they have on it. I don't know that there's an easy answer on how do we fund something like that, and I don't know, I, you know, I, I do not know how spot works or how to request those funds. That is something that I would definitely be interested in learning much more about on how do we fund those things outside of city funds.
Thank you, thank you. Now, moving to land use and economic growth along with the um quarters. The city's plan emphasizes growing the economic base along Grayson Highway. What types of commercial or mixed-use developments do you support in that quarter? And how will you guard against sprawl, visual clutter, or infrastructure strain?
Right. So the way I've seen like how we have grown, so I've been in Grayson since uh twenty seventeen. Um, and it, in that short period of time, the eight, the eight years I've been here, it's grown really, really fast. I'm, I'm not against having multiple businesses like Whataburger and, and the uh uh, you know, the, the restaurants that are right up across the street from Kroger. I would like to see us be a little bit smarter on how we build businesses. I think that we could have a higher density for the businesses, similar to what we have for the rail yard. Um, it does, the, those just take up a lot of land uh for a very small gain. And while we do wanna, we definitely have to grow, we would need to increase tax base. I think we just have to slow down and really think about how do we want to have those uh buildings? Do we want to have a lot of standalone restaurants? Do we want to have more of a get out and walk uh to the different shops and restaurants, similar to Railhouse or uh areas like Lawrenceville or even Monroe, right? They, they have a very good downtown. Um, but I, I, again, those are, those are really difficult topics on how do we grow that and manage that and make sure that we do um what's right for the citizens first, making sure that we listen to the citizens and we ask the citizens as to what they want. I don't think that we are doing that enough. Um, I know I was on the forty-year planning last year. And that uh, everybody says, look, we want to have more uh walkability, we want to have more small-town charm, and we want to have more areas similar to the rail yard. And that's, that's what I would like to see. Um, where you have that area to congregate and to socialize and to be together versus you pull up to Whataburger's drive-through and you drive out, you go to Starbucks and you drive out. They're not designed for social gathering. They're designed for grab and go. And I think that's a shame, right? I think that we lose out on the connectivity of a small town. So if you want a small town, you, you know, one of the things about small town is being, being together.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, Mike, what are your, what is your overall vision for Grayson over the next five to ten years?
Well, I definitely think, so one of the things, it, it's a kind of a strange, strange thing, but one of the things I, I like is I'm not a, a big social media person. I like one-on-one conversations. I like small groups of people. I like to sit down and, and break bread with one another. And I think that, you know, going back to the small-town charm, that, that's all, that requires us to be together, right? That you can't have a small-town charm if you're sitting in your house, watching TV, driving to fast food and getting it for carryout, or calling for Uber Eats. That's not small-town. That's, that's anywhere. And we do have, you know, the, the amphitheater, which is great, and I think we should have more events there. But I also think that we need more areas for teenagers and uh middle schoolers to be able to go after school and hang out. And that gets them off of, you know, the social medias and TikTok and allows them to have FaceTime with their friends outside of a school environment. And I would love to see if we could find ways to do uh more park space or take the park we have and add to it where we can have basketball courts, or we can have uh, I don't know if we have enough room for tennis, but things that would allow people to gather and socialize and instead of be on social media, be in uh, uh, social reality, I suppose. Um, but in five years, I mean, that's, it's a change of how I think that we're going, although it does kind of map to what the uh forty-year plan is.
All righty, okay. And if elected, what would be your top, top three priorities on day one?
Well, I top priority is understanding how, how do best use the system that's there, and then trying to figure out how to make sure that that system works for, for the people of Grayson. And it will, it won't be like day one is, you know, I, I don't know that I can go in there and make, make amazing changes. I mean, that's, there's other people that take into consideration. There are people you, you want to listen to, you want to ask questions. You want to see um what is, what is the best way and the approach to work with the people that are there? If I'm elected, I would be one new person, and there are three others that are still on the city board that have been there for a while and probably have their ways of thinking about things, and I would have to figure out ways to work with them and to drive any changes that I believe in. But the, the main priority would be is how do we address this traffic problem? That is one of the main things in a, in the two-mile, two, two-and-a-half-mile, three-mile stretch from Sugarloaf Parkway all the way down to Liquor Store. Um, there are so many traffic lights, they're not synchronized, they back traffic up left and right. It really just, you know, people tell me, look, it takes twenty minutes to get from, you know, down by one-twenty-four to our neighborhood. That's ridiculous. It's, it's literally four miles away. It shouldn't take twenty minutes. And so my, my main priority would be how do we deal with the traffic situation? Are there new technologies that we can look into? Are there pilot programs we can look into? Are there things that can help traffic move a lot better, such as artificial intelligence, uh, better, better traffic monitoring systems, et cetera? Um, the other is how do we deal, how do we, how do we enable uh the kids and teenagers to have a place that they feel that they can be safe without interruption or being harassed by police, but knowing that, you know, look, this is their community as well, and that they have an opportunity to live in this community without fear of, you know, being, being signaled out. And that, that plays on to, you know, my daughter and making sure that she feels safe. She's, she's seven years, she's in seventh grade, she's almost thirteen years old, and you know, she you know, I, I don't know that she would feel a hundred percent like she can walk the streets um without being called out. And so I want to make sure that we work well with the police department, that we um, with Gwinnett County Police, and that we have good policing that in, involves them with their, the community.
Thank you, thank you. Now, moving to coordination with planning and zoning. The Planning and Zoning Commission meets monthly and has jurisdiction over most land use changes. How closely will you work with planning and zoning, and what reforms, if any, would you propose to improve their responsiveness, transparency, and consistency?
Right. I, I don't have an answer for that. Um, I, I haven't studied that topic. I think being part of the Gwinnett County, it's critical that we work with the planning and zoning of Gwinnett County. I definitely think that we have to have transparency. Um, that goes for our own town, and it also goes for our, our um county.
Okay. Um, now, I'm moving to community and transparency. Grayson is growing more diverse. You um stated that. How do you see the city fostering inclusion and community unity?
Yeah, so I, you know, I know why my wife and I moved to Grayson. We wanted to have good schools. We, you know, we, when we were we, we pulled our sons out of private school, and we said we're gonna send them to public school. And we did a lot of searching as to where we wanted to move to. And Grayson ranked right up there with um, you know, very good high school, very good middle school and elementary school. And that was extremely important to us to have that. And the, the people that are moving into Grayson, I know for sure want that same thing. What we're seeing unfortunately is this growth that is really overtaking our schools and they make them really, really packed, right? So now, instead of having um twenty kids, maybe there's thirty kids to a classroom, and I, you know, quote me on that. I don't know the statistics on how big the classroom sizes are, other than my daughter complaining on how big the classroom sizes are. And I've always, I've always known that when you take a lot of kids and you cram them into a room, the, the challenge is the teachers don't have the ability to take care of all the kids that are there, watch all the kids, and the burden that they have is just so great, and it's hard for them to be effective teaching. So when we talk about our community growth and making sure that we have that diversity, it's not just do we build enough housing for people to move into, but it's also the surrounding area, the, the three zero zero one seven zip code. And all the kids that are getting funneled into Grayson High or even into the middle school, not into Couch Middle, and it's, we, we aren't, I don't know that we're careful about it, which which is interesting to me is that we, we don't have enough, I don't think we have enough capacity for the people that we have.
Thank you. How would you describe your leadership style?
Hmm, very good question. Um, I, I have been in leadership positions for many years in IT and now owning a small business. I guess, you know, I, I manage a bunch of teenagers and the two are totally different. Um, but the, the, and if you've ever managed teenagers, you know that you have to be a lot more hands-on, and you have to be a lot more direct with what you're asking them to do. Um, with professionals, it's a lot different. But my style doesn't, hasn't changed between working with professionals and working with teenagers. It's one of collaboration and mutual respect. Um, I've, I've been very fortunate with the people that have worked for me, and that I've also had a lead in that I have, I've, I'm there to help them grow in whatever position they are. I see that when you, when you lead somebody and you want them to be successful, and you demonstrate that time and time again, and you really, really set forth to make sure that they have the tools they need to be success, to be successful, and that you are there to support them, and you are there to teach them. I find that's the best way to be a leader. I find the worst way to be a leader is to be one that just tells people what to do. That I find is, it's counterproductive, and really, it's just, it's not very kind. And I, I, I think my leadership style is one of transparency, kindness, and one to foster growth.
Great question. Thank you, thank you. Great answer. City council often requires collaboration. How do you handle disagreements or differing perspectives?
Uh, that's great, right? I have this suspicion that I will probably have a lot of um differently, differing opinions about things. Um, but it, you know, it, it's a I have, I have been in situations when I don't get my way, and it, that is what it is. Um, but the, the key in that, and I think we all face that, every single person that's in any kind of relationship, uh, whether it's their spouse or their children, or their, their boss, or their subordinate. The, the key when you deal with that, when you deal with disagreements is first and foremost, have respect for one another and listen to their point of view. You don't have to agree. I think it's healthy to have disagreement. I think it's healthy to um try to find, you know, what are the things that we disagree on, and of course, try to find where we have commonality. But I, I think, and even more than just finding a commonality, because there'll be times you find you have nothing in common with them. Except you can, you know, if you are genuine with that person, and you, you have empathy towards that person, and you listen from their perspective, they, you may learn something, and then maybe you've changed your own opinion on something because of what you've learned from them. And I've, I've learned this time and time again in the corporate world, in the world of retail, um, you know, just being married. It's, sometimes I have an opinion, and my wife will say something, and you don't have to reevaluate my opinion on it and then realize, you know, maybe that wasn't the best opinion. And I think, you know, we, we all experience that from one degree to another, and we just have to be cognizant of the other person's opinions and respect.
Thank you, thank you. Now, moving to sidewalk prioritization and neighborhood equity. Some neighborhoods may not have sidewalks or safe pedestrian access. How will you decide where sidewalks or pedestrian improvements are expanded, particularly in areas that have historically been under Particularly in areas that have historically been under invested.
Yeah, so Grayson's a small town, um. I haven't, I haven't really thought about how would we, how do we prioritize and what's the equity, I mean. It's a, it's always, that's a the tough topic, like how do we make sure everything is equitable? Well, we all, I think. We would agree that we need to have equality. And and things need to be equitable and my son kind of framed it up like this, he says, you know, let's say you're the tall person. People have probably heard this before, but my son told me that the other day. Um, you know, the tall person can look over the fence and then maybe there's someone that's a little shorter and they can't and they get a box, they stand on it. And then they can see over the fence and then maybe there's someone that's very short and they have to have two boxes and they can stand on those two boxes, look over the fence. He says, that's not, um. That's, you know, he he said it's a difference between equitable and what is it equality or something, but the point being is that. Sometimes we have to do more for someone else so that they can have the same advantages that the person that happens to be tall can be. And where I'm going with that is, you know, if we don't have sidewalks for a certain neighborhood. One is why, you know, is it because we can't put them in because of the the width? Maybe do we need to get any um right of way access? Um, and do any eminent domain on people's front yards? Is it because the neighborhood doesn't want to have sidewalks or historically has not wanted to have sidewalks? I think Village Road's a perfect example, they don't have sidewalks. Um. But had, you know. We have to be smart about it and we have to be as fair as possible, but at the end of the day, sometimes. We're not always gonna get it right. We're gonna work to do better each time.
Thank you, thank you. Would you adopt any policy to ensure future growth builds with con connectivity in mind? For example, complete streets or sidewalks first in new development?
Can you explain that question? Can you elaborate on that question a little more?
Um, so would you adopt any policy, um, you know, to complete, where you. You're gonna build sidewalks first, right, to make sure that. Homeowners have, you know, access or, you know, they're able to walk. You know, rather than building and, you know, going back to complete things like we said in the first question.
Um, I, I, yeah. Would I accept, would I, would I agree with any policy or any, any, you know? I think that. That's a, I I I don't know if I can answer that, right? I have to see what that is before I can say yes or no. I think generally I would agree that we need to have all the sidewalks built in a new subdivision area. Um, as that's being developed, for sure, right? Then that is part of the developer's responsibility at that time. Um, but are there other thi? To, other things that we need to take care of? Yeah, but will I just blanketly support everything that comes in? I don't know, I'd have to read what that means and what the language means inside of that.
Alrighty, thank you, thank you. Now moving to funding and maintenance of infrastructure. Beyond just building new roads and sidewalks, maintenance is critical. What is your plan to ensure that Grayson has sustainable funding for maintenance? So that new investment doesn't compromise upkeep of what already exists?
Yeah, so I think it just makes sure that we have a healthy tax base. Um, I'm not promoting like new taxes, but I'm I am making sure that. We have the tax base that can support maintenance along with growth. And that's, our funding comes from, you know, taxing uh the taxes that we we gather. And we have to make sure that we have a healthy tax base for it.
Alrighty, would you support leveraging grants, regional partnerships? Or bonds to help absorb high cost infrastructure in underserved areas?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Moving on to growth versus character preservation. As development pressures increase, how will you preserve Grayson's small town and residential character in less commercial parts of the city?
Right, so what what I'm seeing, right, we. We see that, we we're seeing this constantly, right? Whether it's inside of Grayson or just outside of Grayson is that we're. Developers, we're allowing them to build as high density as possible and I don't know that that's helpful, that doesn't seem like it's a um. It doesn't seem to me like that's small town charm. Um, or that small time feel when we find an acre and we try to put eight houses on it. But I think if we focus on. How do we build where we can have new housing that um. Allows for a a more quaint style, whether it's smaller houses instead of uh huge single family houses. Um, maybe those are townhomes, maybe we get into that. And that that kind of contradicts about having high density, but I think. Having areas that can have townhomes or having small cottage-like homes. In conjunction with something like uh the lake that's. Where our new subdivision, the subdivision right next to mine is, making sure that we have a lot of green space and maybe even having an ordinance that. Every subdivision has to have a certain amount of green space uh set aside for um preservation.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. I think we have some questions, um, let me see, we'll um see if they have any and then we'll come back to that. We talked about um transparency, okay, here's one right here from Erica Pope. Um, it would, how do you plan to collaborate with community partners to promote and sustain diversity, equity and inclusion with in Grayson?
Yeah, so I, just a quick question on which community partners, right? Um. I don't know which ones would not be in in favor of having D E I, um, I know for whatever reason that. Seems like a bad word for some reason, I don't know why, um. But making sh- uh, our our community is diverse. Um, I fully support making sure that we include people and that we have a diverse and equitable. Um, community, everybody should have the right to uh to be a part of the decision-making process, everybody should have a right to. Feel like they are a part of the community. And so any partner that does not want to support. Um, D E I initiatives, I I don't know that I want to gravitate towards them. I would rather gravitate towards a company that respects their employees and respects the people that make up the community. And we cannot do that if we ignore the the amount of diversity that we have in here. And if we don't include people, I mean, it seems kind of counterintuitive that why wouldn't we include people? It just seems kind of strange. So, um, I. How would I collaborate? I mean, look, I I wanna collaborate with those that want to work with the people of our community. And include people in our community. Whether, whether somebody wants to call it D E I or wants to call it something else. Is irrelevant as long as we're trying to work together and solve those questions. Solve those problems together and getting people's input.
Thank you, thank you for your question, Erica Pope. Do we have any other questions in the chat at work? Okay, one um question came in from Shanta Townsend. Would you support partnerships with schools, nonprofits and community organizations to expand academic arts or community programs?
Absolutely, absolutely, no, no doubt about it.
Alright, thank you, thank you. And Shanta also asked, African-American students with disabilities are disproportionately disciplined and less likely to receive early intervention nationwide. What will you do to ensure fair treatment, early support and equal access? To city resources for black children with disabilities in Grayson?
Yeah, Sandra, I I appreciate that question. Um, I I don't think it just uh is not just with black students with disability, it is black students, period. Uh, and. You know, I'm gonna talk about my experience as a kid. I grew up in a predominantly white neighborhood, a white, I went to a school that was predominantly white. And I got into a fight with one of the four black guys that happened to go to school with. And I had known known Michael for, I don't know, since second grade, we've always been friends. And the two of us got into trouble, we went to the vice principal's office. And our vice principal never thought about the race, he always just said, are you guys good? Is there gonna be any more trouble? And we both said no. And, you know, that was a, that was a strange era, that was like in nineteen eighty-six, uh eighty-seven, um, and. You know, I never thought of it as a race problem back then. Until I moved away from Connecticut and moved and lived in the South. And saw how disproportionate children were treated because they're black. Um, it, it's, I I I have to struggle with this because my daughter's mixed and my sons are mixed. And I worry about my daughter every single day. When she goes to school, if she says something or does something that a s- a kid does that is just stupid. And how is she gonna be treated? So, I I think we have got to do everything we can to make sure every child. Is, and I wouldn't say discipline the same, I would say there are given the opportunities to learn from mistakes the same. So, if a, if a white student is given opportunity, why isn't the black student given that same opportunity? And. Part of how I believe about things would definitely be on making sure that we treat kids as kids with. You know, knowing that, you know, they are not smart when it comes to acting like kids sometimes. And we we have this zero tolerance. And we just get, you know, a- and and we, I don't know why we have zero tolerance, you know, I, it wasn't zero tolerance when I was a kid. Probably not for a lot of the parents here either, and we don't take a minute and let kids be kids. Um, but to answer the question, um, I will do everything that I can to make sure that every child. Is either disciplined the same as with with the same way of also, I I think. The opposite of making sure that they're given the chance for a second chance, the same. And I think that that's important and I think that we should do everything we can and make it non-racial. But I know that that's not always a reality, so my commitment is always do everything I can based on the child and not because of their skin color. And I know that, you know, I I'm not blind to um those problems.
Thank you for your answer and thank you, Shanta, for the question. Questions um in the chat? Okay, we've got a question from Zach Rushing. What most differentiates you from the current city council members, Mike?
Yeah, so thanks Zach for asking that question, um. Well, I'm, I I uh, my mom, my mom always told me that I I I marched to a different drummer and. I, you know, growing up, I didn't really know what that meant, but as I got older, I realized what that meant, it it really just meant that I'm independent in my thinking. I listen to people, I talk with people, I try to find out how I can work with people that maybe I never thought I could work with before. Um, I find that what makes me different is, uh, I just, I don't go along to get along. I I go along when it makes sense and I fight like crazy when it doesn't make sense. And I do everything I can to to say, look, you know, here's a better way of doing things that satisfy and help more people. Than just the people that look like me. I do everything that I can to make sure that voices that are typically not heard are heard. And I stand in the corner of the person that can't stand in the corner by themselves. And that's, that's the person that I am, that's the person I've always been and that's the person I'll be going forward.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks Zach for your question. And we've got a question from um Shantu Edward. The current growth in Grayson is also coming with a level of insecurity. What is your plan that Grayson remains a safe community for families and children?
Um, yeah, that's, I think just having good partnerships with Gwinnett County Police, we have a precinct that is. Um, down off Azora Road. I have worked with that police department, I have had them, I've had a call them when we've had disturbances in our neighborhood. But really it comes down to community, um, I would say community policing, but it is about. How does a neighborhood, excuse me, uh, how does a neighborhood um take care of itself? So we, our neighborhood has been um part of the cops program. For a number of years and we've made like the cops program of the year three times in the last, last few years. And it's, I I don't know, I really don't know a lot of people. That are anxious about our community or afraid of our community. But I do think that we need to work with the Gwinnett County Police. Uh, closely and make sure that the police also have a presence that is not one of aggressiveness. But one of like, hey, look, we're here to support the community and to be uh. Be, I I don't know, friends is probably not the right word, but to be um partners with the parents. And make sure that when somebody calls nine-one-one, um, that, you know, nobody's gonna get shot. Because they are having a a mental breakdown or any kind of um. Any kind of issue that, you know, we've we heard about in the news. I don't feel unsafe, I don't think my wife feels unsafe. Um, and I don't think that a lot of people feel unsafe, but I definitely have not talked to everyone. And if if we don't work well with the police department and we don't work well with other city leaders to. Try to make sure we have safe places for kids to go. And I can understand that, that apprehension that people have.
Thank you, thank you. You just asked asked the question that you haven't talked to everyone, you know, in Grayson. How do you plan to stay connected and communicate with residents once you're in office?
So I think we need to have better, uh, like, we don't, the the Grayson does not, um. They they don't have live uh feeds, I think we should have live feeds for the Grayson, for Grayson. Um, during the city hall meetings. I think also the city needs to push out more newsletters to uh the residents. I know that we, the Grayson does have like an Instagram and Facebook. But I think that having newsletters and. Uh, um, more like when we have the community events, just, you know, talk to their their residents and show. Share with them what what's going on with the community.
Alrighty, thank you, thank you for that. Um, do we have, okay, we have one here from Miss um Rushing. If someone is undecided, please tell them why they should vote for you.
Yeah, I I um. I've thought a lot about why people should vote for me. And it's a, it's a hard question and a not hard question. So, you know, regardless of why my opponent didn't show up tonight, um, I I know my opponent. She's my neighbor and my sons and her sons, um, and her daughter all hang out together, they're they're friends and. I've known um Rochelle since I've lived here. Um, she's a fantastic person. And I don't have any issues with her and I don't have any issues with um how she really is involved with the community, uh. But I definitely think differently than she does. And I think that I would make a good bridge between uh somewhat two different worlds. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, I just know it's a different thing. And I also am very independent on how I think about things, I am not backed by the city council. I um get along with some of the city council and, you know, some of the, one of the members, I'm. I'm friendly enough to, um, but I've had differences with and I will, but I'll do everything I can to work with. But I I think you, you know, when I'm asking for your vote, I'm, I am a very dedicated person, I show up. I also am a very transparent person and I, you know, I think I'm a very kind person. And I I don't know, I I care tremendously about um this community, I care about my family and I care about my neighbors. And I wanna be able to do um everything that I can to help them and to be their support when they need that. And I think that the, while there is, um. You know, the need to have good business relationships and bring business in, I think it's extremely important to remember that the people that. Um, live here are the people that really matter and trying to make sure that they know that they matter.
Thank you, thank you. What does public service mean to you personally?
Oh, that's a, that's a fun question. What does it mean for me? I mean, look, there's a lot of things that um public service means to me. I I think just, you know, I think about the stuff that I do right now today in my store, um. I work, I work with a lot of kids, I don't, don't make a lot of money on it, um. I I, you know, I I know that I sell Lego and I sell stuff, but um. I get the opportunity to work with kids and I love it, I have a great time, I um get to. I teach them, I get to show them. And I I always said when I was younger and unfortunately this didn't happen, I said, when I'm fifty, I'm gonna either be a CEO or I'm gonna be a teacher. Uh, well, I'm neither, um, but I do teach a lot, I I teach kids a lot about, um. You know, uh, life through Lego and engineering and stop motion animation and stuff like that and. Seeing kids light up and and do these things, it's amazing to me. And public services, being able to take, take what you have learned over your years of of. Whatever your background is and being able to just share that and to use that in a way that benefits other people. whatever your background is and being able to just share that and to use that in a way that benefits other people. I have, I've never been a selfish person. I, I'm never in it for me, um, as far as like I'm doing this only for myself. I do this because I love people and I love to help people. I have many, many years of just stopping and helping people that need help. Any and every time. And one of my, my three key goals. Um, I, I have three, like, three, I don't know what principles I live by. One is be kind. It's free to be kind. Um, there's a cost to not being kind. The other is having leftovers versus leftouts. And that means to me like, you know, apply it to the dinner table, making sure there's more food than you need, so nobody goes hungry. Whether, when you, especially when you have people over, but in politics and in community service, it means making sure people have a seat at the table. And they're not left out. Um, but the other one that may be kind of a little strange to say is I never go out of my way for my friends. And in that, I just mean that eh, whatever my friends need, I am there and it's on my way and I make sure that it's a part of whatever I'm doing to help them. And I've been that way for years and years and I will be that way whether I'm elected or not elected. Because it gives me a lot of joy to be able to help people.
Okay, thank you, Mike, thank you. Now, um, would collaborating with state legislators be a priority for you in addressing the needs and real concerns of your constituents? And this is from Danielle Toano.
Yeah, of course. There is no doubt. I mean, so if the state is gonna control the money to the counties and the counties are gonna control it to the municipalities. We definitely have to work with state representatives. There's, there's no doubt. You have to work with everybody that will be able to give you some money.
Thank you, thank you. Now, Mike, how can residents learn more about your campaign and stay engaged with you?
Yeah, so, um, I, it's a tricky one for me because I am not a social media darling. I, um, I think I have ten followers. I have, uh, Instagram. It's Mike Bruce underscore twenty twenty-five. Uh, but I'm, I'm accessible through there. People can ask any, ask me any question. I will respond. I will tell people anything they need, you know, how I feel about things. Um, but also as you see me out and about the community, you're welcome to just stop me and ask. And I am at my shop almost every single day and people can always come in and just talk. And I'm always, always open to a conversation.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I guess just, um, let candidates know more, the community know more about you. What personal or professional experiences do you bring that you believe will help you serve the people of Grayson effectively? And I think we might have touched on this, but just to remind them again.
Sure, well, one, I have, you know, thirty-five plus years in, uh, uh, corporate experience with business background. Um, I have a business degree. I also have a lot of, you know, I, I suppose experience with life and with people. And I think that will take me farther than, um, without not having that. Now, am I a perfect person? Nope. Um, do I get upset with things? Yep. Um, but I always am trying to do better and I am always trying to do the right thing every, every time.
And what has been your most rewarding experience as a candidate for this race?
Oh, it's meeting people. And it's, it's fun. It's fun to talk about like why I want to do this. It's fun to learn it. Fun may not be the right word, but it's interesting to learn what people's problems are. Um, and, and just trying to be able to, uh, help, help figure out a way to solve that problem. I've always loved solving problems. Uh, it's much more fun to solve a problem when you get to work with that person to solve it. But it's, it's, I mean, just getting out and to, I, I love talking to people. And so getting out and talking with people about anything and everything is just so, it's a lot of fun. That's been a, that's probably been the best part.
And what would you say is the most recurring concern, you know, while on the campaign trail, um, for the residents of Grayson?
Uh, let's see, traffic comes up quite a bit, uh, traffic, um, the, the, are we growing too fast? Um, that's, that's been a big thing as well. And, you know, I don't know that Grayson is growing as fast as right outside of Grayson. That's, that's really been a choke point. But really it's what's our growth and what are we gonna do about this traffic?
Okay. And what is your promise to the citizens of Grayson? You know, once you're, you know, if you get elected.
Well, get elected or not get elected. My, my promise is always to show up and help wherever I can. It's, um, I, I'm not gonna make a promise like I'm gonna make the traffic disappear, you know, that takes time, it takes effort and it takes planning. Um, but I will do everything I can. So my, my promise is to be truthful, my promise to be transparent. And it's to be, um, really just, you know, as helpful as I can and to listen and to ask questions. It's not to tell people what they need to do. It is to be, um, a, an honest person. And to be someone that you can rely on. And to know that, you know, I'm gonna make a mistake, but when I do, I'm gonna be the first one to call myself out and to do everything I can to correct it.
Alrighty, and I think we've probably got about, um, two more minutes left, Mike. But please again, remind our listeners why you are the person, you know, for this job.
Yeah. Well, first, I, I wanna thank the Gwinnett NAACP. It's been hon- honestly an interesting event for me to, to be a part of. It's, and it's been a pleasure and an honor to be part of it. Um, I think why, why should you elect me or vote for me? I, I think, look, I am someone that's genuine. Uh, I don't, I'm not, I don't, um, I don't know what the right word is, uh, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not a phony. I'm not fake about things. I, I wear my emotions on my sleeve. Uh, you'll, you'll know if I agree or not agree very fast on something. But I'm always open to listening to others to try to understand where the things that I think or the opinions I have or the op, the, the way I feel about something. I'm always open to questioning myself and to do better and to learn about, um, why someone thinks differently. And so, you know, when you, when you want somebody, you want someone that can think independent, that can get along with people and likes to work with people and does want to solve the problems for people. So that's, that's why I think I'd be a fantastic city councilman.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any other questions, um, from the chat? Well, thank you again, um, Mike for being with us, um, this evening and I'm sure you know, it will come out.
Well, I certainly appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Alright, well, Mike, definitely thank you again for coming on tonight's, uh, candidate forum. And good luck out there on the campaign trail. We look forward to, uh, you know, uh, seeing how this race turns out. Uh, hopefully the voter turnout increased. For those of you who, uh, uh, know, we, we put out a, a public statement about the, uh, lack of signage and only twenty people had voted. Uh, as of that very first week of early voting. Um, I did see a spike after the, uh, comment I made online as well as at the city council meeting on Monday. Um, of, of about twelve voters the next day. So hopefully keep it up. I, I do know organizationally, we will have boots on the ground, um, in Grayson to let people know about this election because more people need to know uh, about this election and learn more about the candidates and, and do a deeper dive into the candidates. Cause, um, you know, what sometimes may seem one way on the surface may not be the case once you do a deeper dive. So I encourage everyone, please look up the candidates. I still got my, my time. Time on myself. Uh, yeah, we got a few comments. Thanking Mike for coming. We definitely want to thank Mike for coming again. Uh, this is the last week of early voting, so if you haven't had a chance to make your voice, uh, heard, uh, please take time to do so. Uh, some, a couple people shouting out, nah, 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 she did, she did a great job. Um, again, if you live in the city limits of Grayson, please go out and vote. If you're not sure, go to www.mvp.sos.g a.gov. Pull up your precinct card and it'll show you whether you're inside of the city limits. Um, and, uh, eligible to vote in this election, which you'll be going to the city hall. Uh, like I said, you have in between now and Friday, between nine and five to go there. And then please pivot to the, your county early voting, uh, precincts for the county. Uh, to vote for your statewide public service commissioner elections. We definitely need your voice in, in that election and, and support the East Plots again. Know there's a big push to not support it due to, uh, some frustration with voters with the, uh, current, uh, school board. I know that's where that energy is coming from, but at the end of the day, there will be elections next year in May and there will be elections in May of twenty twenty-eight. If, you know, if you want to see a different school board, but don't, uh, cut them off at the knees and hurt the kids and hurt the upkeep of these schools and the safety of these schools by not supporting the East Plots. Um, now, any closing comments you want to make?
Just wanna say thank you, thank you for all your questions. And thanks to the candidate for showing up and, you know, letting us know about this platform. And thank you for the opportunity, President Paul, to serve.
Absolutely, anytime, anytime. Well, thank you, uh, Gwinnett County. Uh, we, we'll see y'all in the Gwinnett, these Gwinnett County streets. Y'all have a great night.
Have a great night and go out and vote, vote early.